Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Here.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Here.
Council President Pridgen?
Atty.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Formus President?
Stand for the flag. Our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
John Chapter fourteen is a scripture penned during the time of great tumult in the life of Jesus Christ in the last week of that life. And during that time of so much tumult in and around him, these are the words he spoke in John fourteen twenty-seven. Peace, peace I leave with you, my peace I give you. Don't give to you as the world gives, do not let your hearts be troubled, and do not be afraid. All of you who've taken any kind of leadership training, leadership classes, leadership forums know that leading when fear and inner turmoil is on the inside of a leader is a recipe for failure. There has to be something, the compass has to have a compass point of peace in the midst of all that happens around us. Sometimes devil say to me, I'll take a breath. What she say it? Take a moment to reset with all the noise so that there's peace as you make this decision. Peace I leave with you, my peace I give you, and don't give to you as the world gives, do not let your hearts be troubled, and do not be afraid. As today decisions are made, discussions take place, may God grant us to do that from a place of inner peace as we're making important decisions around. Will you pray with me? Father, thank you for these words, thank you that although the disciples didn't have a clue what was about to happen, the one who uttered these words knew fully well. And amidst of all that was coming, he spoke peace. Don't let your heart be troubled, don't be afraid, peace I give you. Today, Lord, I ask that you give each of these leaders peace. Important decisions, key decisions, ones for the citizens and for the city and for the future. Lord, you know all the challenges, many of them so unexpected over the last several months, that are now among and on the plate for each of these council members. Oh, Lord, would you grant them your peace as they guide us through times of unforeseen circumstances and difficulties? Let them today hear your voice and feel your peace, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, memorials? Councilmember Galumbek?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Riverside community lost a longtime resident, although he had moved away a few years ago, former Erie County legislator, L. D. Benedetti. He was chairman of the Erie County Legislature for a period in the early two thousands, I believe. He had been sick for the past several years. And when I first got involved in community events in my neighborhood back, well, in the early eighties, when I was old enough to vote, he was one of the first people that I had met that was active politically. And in many regards, he was a mentor along with Dave Vertecchi and Supreme Court Justice Jean Fahey. And, you know, L. was a legislator, he was, he was an interesting guy, and he was a good guy overall. He cared about his community, he cared about his neighborhood. And even if that meant that he had to take very, very unpopular stands or positions, he's sadly going to be missed by his wife, Patty, his daughter Summer, and his son Michael. And by his many, many friends, families, and other people that he helped throughout the years. And then also, I didn't know him very, very well, but Dick Sliz, another former Erie County legislator and chairman of the legislature, legislature passed away around the same time as L. did. So my condolences to them and their families.
Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask that we keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of Yvonne McCray, her father just passed away on, I believe, Sunday. He was a member of the Hopewell Baptist Church, of course, of which we frequent a lot as I was growing up. And Hopewell Baptist Church is only a couple doors away from Antioch, and we know the McCray family very well. Yvonne McCray serves the City of Buffalo. She has served in various capacities, now of which, of course, she's in the housing, working with the office of strategic planning. So we are asking that City of Buffalo keep her family in prayers along with her siblings and the rest of the family. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Others?
Of course, Yvonne, if it wasn't for Yvonne, a lot of people would not have affordable housing, and it wouldn't be generated within our community. Because Yvonne works very hard with community groups. Hearing another, we continue to remember the men and women who may have given their life for the freedom of our country and others since our last meeting. And all of the names that have been called, we pause for a moment.
Thank you. Just reminding the public that we, our, our council meetings are held in chambers and will continue to be streamed live. Our committee meetings will be by Zoom and announced at the end or on Facebook at the end of the session. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on September first, twenty twenty are approved. Councilmembers, the late files are before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files? Hearing no objections to any of the late files, we will hear the entire agenda that is before us. Mr. Chair? Are we going from the top?
Motion to take item eighty-nine out of order.
All right, we probably gonna have to gesture mic just a little bit, maybe just so we can hear.
Motion to take item eighty-nine out of order.
The motion is to take item eighty-nine out of order, second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Discharge item twenty-ten eighty-seven from C.D.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
From the top?
Item number one, Beverly Gray Business Exchange Center Semiannual Operator Update.
Motion to send to C.D. Items one and two. Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number three, local landmark, four thirty-eight Walden Avenue.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number four, report of sale, twenty-eight seventy-four Bailey.
Motion to send to C.D.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number five, report of sale, eight seventy-one Fillmore.
Motion to approve items five, six, and seven.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number eight, submission of monthly report, August twenty twenty.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number nine, Wingate Pilot.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number ten, appoint consultant.
Motion to send civil service.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Item number eleven, Buffalo Water twenty twenty bond resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number twelve, interfund loan account balances.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number thirteen, notification cereals.
Motion to send to C.D.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number fourteen, notification cereal.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. And Councilmember Rivera, I just wanted to make a comment on thirteen, and if I'm too muffled, if somebody will let me know, I want to make sure the public can hear me, I know it's kind of tough. The reason we're sending this, this would normally be received and filed, but because it is in the Fruit Belt area, and I mentioned this in caucus, and because it is changing the parking around Foster, Maston, or Hot, or City Honors, we wanted to make sure the public, if they had any concerns about this, had an opportunity to ask the questions before we just received and filed it and it happened. Thank you, sir. Next item?
Item number fifteen, change order, Michigan Avenue, thirty-six inch waterline rehab.
Motion to approve items fifteen through twenty-two.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number twenty-three, appoint equipment operator.
Motion to send to civil service, items twenty-three through twenty-six.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number twenty-seven, approval to renew contract.
Motion to approve items twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Item number twenty-nine, Adam Arroyo.
Motion to send to the Claims Committee, items twenty-nine through sixty-five.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, who has the floor.
Mr. Majority Leader, number twenty-nine, we're gonna send the claims instead of sending it to finance regarding COVID expenses.
Item twenty-nine?
Yes.
I have, item twenty-nine is a Claims Committee item. I don't know if we have, item twenty-nine is Adam Arroyo, one hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Do you have the agenda that's marked twelve twenty-two P.M.?
No.
All right. Can somebody please get the Councilmember twelve twenty-two from council staff, please? It's on the way. Do you need to revisit that?
I'm okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that one.
Okay. All righty, next item?
Item number sixty-six, auctions, auction scrap vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number sixty-seven, City of Buffalo COVID-nineteen expense report.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number sixty-eight, City Hall copier contract.
Motion to approve items sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number seventy, passport parking contract amendment.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number seventy-one, passport parking contract extension.
This is a late file.
Is there anyone who had any objection to the extension of the passport parking contract?
No objection, motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number seventy-two, Buffalo City Swim Racers contract.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number seventy-three, notice of intention, naming parcel at Main and North Division Streets, Nikola Tesla Park.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek, and I think that dedication is Friday, is going to be Friday, and we, at four o'clock at the park, so we'll be there with you. Next item?
Item number seventy-four, liquor license notice.
Motion to receive and file items seventy-four and seventy-five.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number seventy-six, FBI Buffalo Citizens Academy Alumni Association request.
Motion to send to Education Committee.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number seventy-seven, new legislation providing financial and budget flex to local government and school districts.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number seventy-eight, committee meeting transcriptions.
Motion to receive and file items seventy-eight through eighty.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number eighty-one, E.F.S.A. letter, July twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number eighty-two, request to speak regarding Buffalo Fire Department.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number eighty-three, special use permit, six seventy-one Fillmore.
Motion to send to legislation, City Planning Board, items eighty-three through eighty-six.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number eighty-seven, Western New York Youth Climate Council petition for declaration of climate emergency.
Motion to send to C.D.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Submissions list, civil service, item number one, appoint real estate maintenance supervisor.
Motion is to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Finance, item number two, approval of issuance and sale of BMHA's Capital Fund Housing Revenue Bonds twenty twenty.
Motion to approve, item number two.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Item number three, Bureau of Subrecipient Agreements.
Motion to recommit.
Motion to recommit, second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number four, approve current base proportions twenty twenty.
Motion to approve items four, five, and six.
Second by Councilmember Rivera.
Community development, item number seven, amend DDA for three twenty-one Olympic.
Motion to recommit.
Second by Councilmember Rivera.
Item number eight, permission to designate developer, N.C.C. Seventh Day Adventist.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number nine, naming Nikola Tesla Park.
Motion to recommit.
Item number nine, recommit, second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number ten, report of sale, six twenty-six Woodlawn.
Motion to approve items ten through and including fifteen.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number sixteen, violations of the city's apprenticeship law.
Motion to send this to the Legislation Committee.
Second by Councilmember Rivera.
Legislation, item seventeen, food store license sixty-two East Amherst.
Motion to approve with conditions, item seventeen and eighteen.
Conditions have been filed by the district council members, second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number nineteen.
Councilmember Wingo, the floor.
Yeah, item number seventeen, we will file the food store conditions with this item. The food court, food store conditions are the same conditions that every food store in Maston District has been approved under.
Absolutely. Next item?
Item number nineteen, secret neg deck, Ralph C. Wilson, Jr., Centennial Park.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number twenty, draft of duty to intervene law.
Before, before this is adopted, I just wanted to ask the council president if you could briefly touch base on this either now or later, because I know you have, you introduced a local law which is on the agenda today. And I know this is, this item here was something that this council voted on in the past, that you also introduced instructing Corporation Council to draft legislation. So I just wanted to be clear, what we're, what's marked for adoption here is sep, is separate than the local law that Council President Pridgen has on the agenda later, which I'm sure he'll talk about that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that the, so that the public understands, what we're getting ready to do is receive and file this item. This item is not the law. In a few minutes, the law, the draft of the law will be before this council. This was what triggered the writing of the law. I know that there was a lot of confusion when we received a draft from the public of was that the law? That was not the draft law. We have to draft it within the council. So when we receive and file this, because Corporation Council has filed now, which we will take up in just a few minutes, the duty, the carryous law, the duty to intervene law, this will now then be received and filed because this task has been completed.
Thank you very much, and the motion is to receive and file.
Thank, and thank you for asking for the clarity, because I think sometimes the public doesn't know because they just don't know. And it is our job and duty to make them aware and to try to make government a little less, without definition and transparent so that a citizen who is sitting at home and we receive and file it doesn't think, they just got rid of carryous law. Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number twenty-one, special use permit, twenty-two sixty-eight Genesee.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
And could I just take a moment to say that?
Absolutely.
Pre-COVID, we had a community, and we all had agreed on the following condition, that hours of operation would be closed at midnight during the week and closed at eleven P.M. on Sunday, which the conditions were submitted to license. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item?
Resolutions, item eighty-eight, four-way stop sign at Vanderbilt and Benzinger.
Motion to send to C.D.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number ninety, Robin Terrace parking concerns.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Item number ninety-one, contractor documentation of apprenticeship quotas.
Motion to adopt the resolves, remainder to legislation.
Second by Council, President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number ninety-two, fee waiver resolution for Fruit Belt Community Land Trust Organization.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion is to approve.
Thank you, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number ninety-three, availability of mental health professionals to Buffalo Police Department.
This is a late file, items open.
This is a proposal for, that Councilmember Wingo and myself wrote, Councilmember Wingo had did, and he can speak for himself, legislation in the past or written a resolution about mental health. I know that the mayor on yesterday did have the press conference about Endeavor. I want to be clear, this count, this resolution supports Endeavor, I can't say that enough. I do think that when you have a crisis or something that needs to be paid attention to, you need more than one thing at times. What this resolution calls for is a seven-day-a-week, twenty-four-hour-a-day mental health professional to be truly embedded in the police department. 24-hour-a-day, mental health professional to be truly embedded in the police department in which possibly they are located at headquarters. The reason for that is if there's a mental health situation, and I believe council member Bowman shared with me an email that came from mental health professionals, you need someone to be on scene as rapidly as possible. The endeavor contract is necessary, and this does not get rid of that, because they bring a different set of skills sets. I believe that when I look at the contract, it talked about social workers. I didn't see the words "mental health professionals," although a social worker could be if they were trained. What this is calling for specifically is for mental health workers, people who, this is what they've studied, they know how to do this, and they can get to the scene as quickly as a police officer. Why? Because if they're at headquarters, then they can be transported in a police car and not have to deal with traffic or have a person who may be living in Lancaster and then trying to get them to Buffalo, especially in times of snow and those type of things, to a mental health crisis. Question that was asked immediately, how do you pay for it? In this resolution, it does not say, take it out of the city budget. It does not say, take it away from the police budget as, as of yet, and I do think that when we come back to discuss the budget, you're gonna see a different type of budget. But it says to try to partner with other agencies or with foundations or with our county government to find a way to fund it until we have either a different system that we can afford or that we are at budget time. So this is what this is about. It does not take away from Endeavor. It does not take away from the announcement yesterday, but I want to be clear, the Endeavor contract is Monday through Friday, and I forgot the hours. They're regular eight o'clock to whatever time, and, and then there's a little portion that says, or as needed, but as needed has no guarantee that, that we can have the response. The reason I think this is so important is we're seeing all over the country, not only a call for this type of mental health team that is available to our police force, because our police force does, some people do receive some training, but that's not their core job. They are not mental health professionals. They receive some de-escalation training, which we push that they need more, but they are not mental health professionals. And my hope is, is that the administration would receive this resolution as a friendly resolution and work together. It can't just be, if, if they do receive this, it can't just be the administration trying to find partners. It's gonna have to be a community effort. And those who are out there, and justifiably so, who are saying police reform, when we put these type of reforms, it would be very good to work together to say, how do we finance this so that situations like this last weekend, that a mental health professional would be on scene as quickly as possible, I think we'll see different outcomes. No system is foolproof. Let me say that. No system is foolproof. But at the end of the day, I think that we have a responsibility to think outside of, and I don't even know if this is outside of the box thinking, so much as sensible thinking, and, and instead of backing into it with, we don't have the money, we don't have the money, I'm gonna say it like this. We have the money, and I'll bring this up when we get to tasers, but we, we found some money to pay 4.4 million. I got that we do not have the money in the budget right now. That's why this calls for looking for other revenue sources for that to occur. Councilman Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You said it all. I'm gonna just add just a little piece. We're talking about the mental health of our community, and we are ensuring that the folks who are responding to the constituents and the residents of the city of Buffalo and folks who even frequent Buffalo visiting are being met with officers who understand their humanity, who see their humanity, and who are in every way trying to de-escalate first. Now let's talk about the other side, all right? Police officers are human. They are human beings who respond to cause of crises. That's when you call the police, when there is a crisis occurring. That's when they respond, and the majority of police cause, the vast majority of police cause are due to violence, some type of lawless behavior, someone is in danger. We have to remember that. And these humans who are responding to these causes are just that, they're humans too. Now, let me say this. The person who was involved in this incident over the weekend, this person represents the top 10% of the police report who has had a very, very, very significant troubled career as a police officer. What do I mean by that? So his disciplinary card, and I'm not gonna read it all, but you can look on investigative posts website, and you can find it for yourselves, whoever's watching, but here you have, date opened 2010, complaint with conduct, procedures, 2011, use of force, 2011, conduct, 2012, use of force, 2012, use of force, on-duty shooting, 2013, use of force, 2013, use of force, 2015, procedures, 2015, procedures, 2016, conduct, 2016, conduct, weapon pointed, 2017, use of force, physical, 2019, excessive force, 2019, excessive force, 2019, conduct, 2020, conduct, 2020, procedures, and now this. We have to ensure that these officers are whole themselves too. I, I'm not gonna say that things like this can be avoided, but they can be avoided if we take the necessary steps before they happen to ensure that everyone is whole. Training is great, but what about the mental health of the police officers? So this, this individual has a, I don't know if he has the longest disciplinary card I've ever seen, but this is pretty significant. So what I'm going to do to follow up to this resolution is to ask our Corporation Council, and we're gonna draft a resolution asking this, but I'm gonna ask Corporation Council to look into ways we can talk with the Police Benevolent Association to see if we can get into their negotiations, some type of mental health component for our officers who may be experiencing PTSD, because we don't need an officer showing up to a scene or a call with this track record and no track record that parallels this to how he was handled or she was handled after these incidents. So if we're gonna talk restorative justice in the city of Buffalo, if we're gonna talk how we're going to ensure that the community police relation improves, then we need to make sure that we're improving on both sides. We've been beat up, we've been shot and killed in the street just for the color of our skin, but at the same time, we need to make sure that people on the other side of that badge knows that we are human too, in whatever situations they dealt with before they met us. Just because I'm black don't mean I'm gonna hurt you, and just because you have a badge gives you the right to kill me. And the, all of those compounding issues that are in their mind when they meet me on the street, I don't know what they are, but at least if we have some type of mental health component for the police officers, it takes away a lot of the other excuses, the reasons why they approach us, some of them approach us the way they do. So I'm gonna wrap this up there and just say that we're going to be drafting a resolution in the very near future, asking Corporation Council to look into that, seeing how we can get that to the table of the police union and all of the negotiators for the city of Buffalo, to make sure that our police officers, those who are wearing this badge, are aware of their own emotional health, their own behavioral, how they behave themselves, and their own mental, mental health. And, and that's where I'm gonna be, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the time.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And before I go to present pro tem, I think there were some others that had signed on, on this yesterday. I don't see it on the file, but council member Wyatt asked to be signed on to this resolution. Was there any other council member who asked for that? All right, council member Wyatt, council member Bowman asked to be signed on to this resolution. Thank you, council, for your support. Council member Scanlon? And then, add council member Mitchell P. Noakowski. Thank you. Council member Scanlon?
Thank you, council president. The, the subject of mental illness and the ramifications dealt with by people suffering from it, the stigma surrounding it, the lack of empathy surrounding it, and the lack of treatment, not just locally, but throughout the country, are subjects that are near and dear to my heart for a litany of reasons. I was thrilled to see that the administration, the Buffalo Police Department, the PBA announced that MOA regarding the behavioral health component of the department. I am thankful to yourself and to council member Wingo for this legislation for attempting to expand the offerings regarding the mental health, the mental health component and mental illness. There are people suffering each and every day in the city of Buffalo, in Western New York, across the globe, and it can't be overstated how important an issue this is. There are people, as I mentioned, there are people suffering, and not just from the mental illness component, but the tangential issues, the, the correlating issues, whether it be addiction or, or other things. And so I'm thankful for all of those who are involved in bringing this to the forefront. So one last thing I just did want to mention is that all of us here are involved in government, and I think a lot of times we all know that politics don't fall far behind. And the one thing I'm praying for is that this issue does not become a political football, be kicked back and forth, that I pray that all those involved come together, work collaboratively, to offer as many intervention and treatment programs as possible. You mentioned, council president, the word partners, and I think that partnership is the key word here, that everyone is on the same page, pulling in the same direction in order to get something done here and to make these offerings available to everyone in the public. The other thing you mentioned was in the MOA, it referenced as needed, in addition to the, the hours that were set forth in that. So it does appear that everyone is willing to do so. So I, again, I pray that this council, the administration, the Buffalo Police Department, the PBA, everyone comes together to, again, offer as much intervention and follow-up treatment as possible.
Totally agree. Council member Galumbek?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this resolution. I'd like to have my name added to it as well. I want to commend you for putting this together to request an immediate, immediately formulate a plan, because I think that that's the one thing that people don't always understand, that you can't just wave a magic wand and fix problems in government, you know, in general, because of checks and balances, because of laws, contracts, et cetera. I support this, as I've supported and will continue to support reforming the police department. I can tell you, I don't think there's anybody on this council that wants to see another episode like what happened on Sunday. I received a text message indirectly from you to update me on it, and it was like, you know, immediately it was like, oh no, you know, just what happened? Oh no, oh my gosh. And nobody wants for these things to happen, or at least no decent human being wants for these things to happen. Of course, reforming takes time and it takes effort. I know I've spoken to Karen, I've spoken to Tim Ball on numerous occasions when we were trying to make changes in the police department, and it's sadly a very, very slow process because of the checks and the balances that are involved there. And I know that some people have gotten angry because of the questions that I've asked, not necessarily at this council, but the legal questions that I've asked. And those legal questions were asked so that I would know how we could formulate real change that is going to impact all of the residents of the city of Buffalo, and that is gonna be long-lasting, not a knee-jerk change, not a knee-jerk reaction, but, you know, making plans so that we can fix some. We're never gonna fix all of the problems. We put the human, a human being involved in the situation, and, you know, there's always gonna be room for improvement and fixing the problem better. But I think that this resolution addresses many of the problems that we have in the city of Buffalo, and I think it would be very, very important to have professionals that are available on a regular basis. And I just wanted to mention that in today's Buffalo news, there were a couple of articles about Mayor Brown's reforms that were taking place, and I wish that they would have come out a month ago, but the article explained that these are things that had been in negotiation and discussion and formulation for months and months, if not years. And that's why, once again, I commend you for immediately trying to put together something so that we can look at these issues and possibly, hopefully, for the upcoming budget, putting in something that is realistic. You know, I know that I've sat with the mayor and I've sat with people from the police department, and there's been an increase in the academy of people of color, of gender, et cetera, which I think is a good thing for the city of Buffalo. I 100% support the mayor's lobbying efforts, and I've assisted him in this with the residency requirement that would be managed from Albany, legislated from Albany, so therefore that's not something that we in the city of Buffalo would have to negotiate. We would have that written right into state law, and we could have residents of the city of Buffalo, because I've said it before and I'll say it again. I think that when you have people that grew up in the city of Buffalo, in a multicultural neighborhood and community, and having friends of people from different socioeconomic, racial, ethnic, et cetera, we deal with each other in a very, very different way than if you're brought up in a community where everybody is the same as you. So I commend Mayor Brown, and once again, that was years. I remember talking to the mayor two or three years ago about this, and, you know, he had been working on it. You know, I know that in the academy, you know, they've been training each of the new classes that come out with different approaches to policing, and that's one of the keys. You know, the younger people that are coming into the police department, who, by the way, if we were to defund the police, because of contracts and because of state law, labor law, et cetera, those would be the people that would be let go. It would be the younger people. It's just a reality. It's not gonna be the people that have been there for 20, 30 years. The reality is, is that it's going to be the people with the lowest seniority. Those are the people that I want especially to be on the police department, because they have a different view, and this is not to take a shot at the old police actions or whatever, but times change. What worked in 1985, what worked in 1975, doesn't necessarily work in 2020, and the society has changed. When we were kids, I remember 400 Forest Avenue, you had people with mental difficulties that lived there. You didn't have as many people on the street that you had to deal with. The police weren't expected to be social workers. They are now. The same thing is true for teachers. I taught for many years and ended up in Riverside High School for a period of time, and it was a different situation than when I graduated from there 15, 20 years earlier, because society had changed, things had changed. I'm gonna continue supporting the mayor when he pushes for more reforms in the academy. You know, the chokehold was, I think, eliminated six or seven years ago. I forget the exact timeframe. They no longer taught it at the police academy. I support more training for our officers. I also, I was concerned years ago when they changed the requirement for officers, that they didn't need advanced degrees. I think that that should be put back. I think that there should possibly even be a requirement that officers have a background in counseling. I've mentioned to the mayor that we should work with the state and the county universities and educational systems to see if there was a way that we could assist police officers who want to get their degree and maybe go into social work, going into counseling, and they would be able to continue their education. And I think it's a win-win in a way, because you wouldn't necessarily have to pay them. Maybe there's a way that you could work out a deal that their funding for one class or whatever, a semester, ends up getting paid for, but it would have to be in a required field where they're dealing with the public, so it wouldn't be basket weaving for the sake of argument. It would be in social work. It would be in counseling. I think that these are things that are very, very much needed in the police department, and I for one have met with representatives from the PBA, and I've met with representatives from the defund the police groups, and it wasn't, each meeting, each of the meetings that I've had with these different groups, neither one was more amicable than the other, just for the record. When I sat down with the PBA, I let them know what my concerns were, and they weren't happy with every position that I took, but they were appreciative that somebody reached out. out and spoke to them and shared their ideas with them. And much of what I'm sharing with you are things that I said to them. The same thing happened when I've met with people with Defund the Police. I said, you know, I don't support defunding the police. I'd like to see more money going towards our police department so that there could be increased training, so that there could be the tasers. I think it said in the paper that I think $1.8 million was necessary to get tasers for our police department. In a way, I feel shameful that I voted to reduce, yes, to reduce, as did all of us that voted for the budget this year. We voted to reduce the police budget by 1.6 million. Perhaps if we would not have voted to reduce the budget, even though we're getting beat up for increasing it, which we did not do, if we would have increased it, maybe we would have had the taser for this weekend. You know, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And interestingly, a very, very liberal friend of mine that I teach with at Buff State sent me an article and said, is this your position? Ha ha. It was actually the position of Bernie Sanders towards the police department. And it's very, very similar to much of what I just explained is my position right here. You know, better training, better candidates, and ongoing training. And as Mr. Scanlon alluded to too, I think that you need to have mental health assistance for our police officers. I have friends that came back from Iraq, Afghanistan, that have suffered and continue to suffer from PTSD. They were only there for a short period of time. Police officers deal with, you know, we don't usually call the police, it's like our council offices. I very rarely get a phone call from a constituent that says, Councilmember Gollumbeck, everything's going great. Have a good day. See ya. We get the phone call when there's an issue. Well, we don't get violent issues. We don't get people that, we get people that are angry, but we don't necessarily get people who are frightened. When the police officers show up, they get people that are at their worst, a violent home invasion, you know, perhaps violent drug activity, mental health concerns. And the biggest thing that many of my friends who are police officers hate going to when you have a husband and wife that are fighting, domestic issues, because those are very, very volatile, and those make up many, many of the calls. Well, the police officers have to deal with this, and quite honestly, I think it would help if they had counseling and probably if they were forced, because many of my friends on the police force would say, oh, there's nothing wrong with me. I don't want to go in for counseling. Most of us are like that. We try to be macho. But there needs to be these positions available so that we can help everybody to have meaningful reform, long-term and meaningful reform to the police department and policing in the city of Buffalo. So, Mr. President, I commend you for this resolution, and I pledge to continue, maybe not making everybody happy on a regular basis, but I pledge that I will continue to work towards meaningful change in reforming our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to try to be a little bit calmer today. You know, my right honorable friend talked about patience. In 1991, Rodney King was bludgeoned, beaten by LA police. And we've had numerous incidents, and I can go down the length and number of names of individuals who look like me that were killed, unarmed individuals, and it continues to happen. And last, on Sunday, that could have been another individual who could have been killed by police with a baseball bat. But again, we have an individual in Wisconsin, a young man who had shot a number of people walking around with an AK-47, and he walked right by the police. But let that be a man of color with an AK-47. He won't live to tell that story. He has an AK-47. The protesters throughout the country have been talking about police reform, and it's not happening fast enough. And even with the dramatic incidents that occur across our country, we're still moving at a snail's pace, because it's people that like us that are in those situations. We talk about the crack epidemic that happened many years ago. There was not a great response to that. But when we talk about opioid epidemic, it's a total different picture. So when we talk about a black person being killed in the streets of Buffalo, Rochester, New York City, and we talk about patience, people have to understand, we don't have any more patience, because that could have been my brother, that could have been my son, that could have been my uncle. And so when you talk about patience, you just wonder, how much patience should we keep, have we have to keep having to see some legitimate change, some real change? These protesters who protest every night, God bless them, because we need them to keep that fire going, because people think we have time. Some people have time, but many of us don't have that time. I saw that there was a football player who was driving his vehicle to his, to camp, to training. He was pulled over, and he was harassed like he was a murderer. This continues to happen over and over and over again. And I just want to understand why people think we have time? Because you ask the families of the individuals who were shot down, how much time should we have given them to have meaningful change? Rodney King's from 1991, and there has been no significant change since that time. So I say that we need an overhaul of our police, not just changes, not just tweaks. Councilmember Wingo went down a list of a person who's still in the police force that caused the residents of the city of Buffalo $4.5 million in paying out of a claim. I can tell you at any position I've ever had, that if I'd have cost my company $4.5 million, I certainly wouldn't have a job. But it also speaks to another issue. When we talk about police officers having evaluations, this gentleman has a record or a card, whatever they want to call it, that you would say that if I was a supervisor and I was managing, that there would have been interaction and conversation about the incidents that occurred to hopefully change that behavior. It doesn't change by not having that conversation. We've asked numerous times, when we had to pay out significant dollars, what was the remedy after the fact? What did you say to this individual? What type of training did they get? And we're told they're getting training, but some of the officers I talked to say they don't get that training. So again, it questions this system. And when we talk about time, I'm like, how much time have, do we have to wait till the next person that dies in my family? I don't have that time. And I don't think that we, as a community, the community that I represent, the community that I come from, from the East Side, wants to put ourselves on a clock until another incident happens. We authorize tasers, and now there's an excuse about why the tasers wasn't gotten. The police aren't even here to talk about it.
We'll get to that, I don't want to.
So, we want to talk about real change. I propose a civilian review board. I think it's very important. To me, it's the crown jewel of the reform, that we talk about training and all these other pieces, but it talks about the police being in and of themselves policing themselves. And we've heard from DA after DA, from state attorney after state attorney, that the police should not be policing themselves. So we need a civilian review board. We do have to have our police officers do given evaluations. They should be evaluated just like any other person, because for us to have this type of item, where this officer has this long list of infractions, and he's still on the force, I'm scratching my head saying, how? Why? When I was chair of the Civil Service Committee, we had individuals who were not granted to the opportunity to be a police officer, even though this was their life dream. And they got very frivolous excuses why they couldn't become a police officer. But we have individuals on the police force now, that if you look in their record, I'm sure there's a long list of them, but we didn't know that before. It was hidden. And so I think these reforms, it should be a dramatic reform, not just tweaking. It's not been working for a long time. But now is the time for us to make that significant change, that leap into bringing policing into the 21st century, that interacts with the community, not because there's a situation, because that's the natural way it's supposed to happen. People in my district talk about, when our chief have officers walking the beat, how much they enjoy that. I think everyone supports our police. We want our police. We want them to get good-paying jobs, we want them to be safe. Nobody wants to beat them up. Nobody thinks they're bad guys. It's only the select few. People respect the police, but we need a reform, and we need to come together. I support this. I support this resolution. I support anything that helps our police officers become stronger in understanding what their issues may be, because as Councilmember Wingo said, they may have PSTD, those type of things. They may have those things. So let's help them, but we can't help them in a silo. They can't be by themselves. It just can't be the police helping the police. It has to be the community and a community effort, working with the police to change it, to assist our community in being the best that it can be, because for too long, this has been something that we just kind of played with, we talked about, but now is the time. And still, the time is, still is taking its sweet time, because like, we have time. But when you find, think about Saturday, Sunday, what could have happened? We think about the protests that happened in Rochester. That could have been Buffalo from this situation. So I encourage my colleagues to have a greater open mind to what we talk about. It's not about politics, it's about people. And that's what we do. We serve the people. I say, I say this all the time, my favorite color is blue, but if the community comes to me and say, we want this building purple, it's going to be purple, because that's our job to listen to the people and be the voice of the people. I'm right now speaking for the voice of the people, that change is taking too long, and we can't continue to wait and be patient, because the next, the next time we wait, we may not have the opportunity that our loved one could be the one affected by this dramatic change that was happening. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember Weaver?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And when this whole idea of the mental health professionals was brought up yesterday, I had some concerns. I didn't want it just to be a knee-jerk reaction to what was happening out there. I didn't want it to be a political solution to a problem. I want it to be a real solution, and I was concerned, obviously, with the manner in which it was going to be funded, because there's a movement right now to defund police. And I have resisted many of the people, even in my own district, who have criticized me for not supporting defunding police. I know, I worked in the Buffalo Police Department. I remember when I came on in 2000, excuse me, 1982, there was approximately 13,000, 1300 police officers in the police department. There's 775 police officers in Buffalo Police Department. We have cut their budgets. Yes, we have some problems in the police department. Yes, there are people that camouflage themselves as police officers. They are in the police department, camouflaged, dressed as police officers, but they're not doing what they should be doing. And to me, they wear a blue uniform, but they're camouflaged. They shouldn't be there. They should be weeded out of the Buffalo Police Department, and every police department within the country. And I think we have to start accepting and recognizing that, when sometimes we ourselves cannot recognize that and come to an agreement, yes, there is a problem. There's a problem within law enforcement and policing. We've seen it nationally. We felt the tension right here in the city of Buffalo. When it happens in New York City or anywhere else, we feel it right here. We see it in the streets of Buffalo. So we have to come together, including the unions, and the administration, and the common council, and everyone has to come together and say, hey, we have a problem. Let's deal with this problem. And I'm not saying that all of the police officers, I'm not saying, I'm saying that there are members within law enforcement that are camouflaged, and they need to be taken out, and we all have to agree, come to some kind of agreement that the problem does exist. Sometimes we have a problem just agreeing to that principle that there is a problem. So I'm concerned, obviously, getting back to the mental health part of it, how it's going to be funded. I want to make sure that it's not either-or, the police department or mental health. It should be both. We should have a manpower that is adequately staffed to meet the needs of the residents, and we should have health professionals assisting us. Every time this council has had an opportunity to improve the services of the Buffalo Police Department with resources and technology and equipment, we have done it. Many of the ideas of reform have come from this common council, whether it's the tasers, the body camera, de-escalation, all, many of those things have emanated from this body. Yet this body takes criticism, and we're the ones that are out there. And you know, like, the people, I listen to people, and I says, what? That came from the common council. The cameras, it came out of the police oversight when we had meetings right here. The tasers, we discussed, the de-escalation, the diversion program, all those things we've discussed here on the common council. They have come from this common council, but I'm not going to take credit for it, because many people came into these chambers and say, we need to do this, and we've listened to them, and we continue to listen to them. But I don't want to just beat up on the Buffalo Police Department and law enforcement. I appreciate the work that the fine men and women are doing, and I think that we need to support them. At the same time, when we see something is wrong, as we witnessed it and heard today, officers that have a history of abuse and physical abuse, whether their allegation, whether they're proven, I don't know. Just the fact that there are that many complaints against an individual, I mean, you look at a pattern, you say, there's something wrong here. And I'm glad we're able to access that information, by the way, now, and look at, because there are many, you'll find there are many more like that, within law enforcement, and those are the people we need to work to make sure, if they need help, they get help, but absent that, they shouldn't be in the Buffalo Police Department. If they can get help, that is fine. Absent them getting help and continuing to live and work using excessive force, we need to do something, and we need to do this right away. You're right, we can't wait for more people to suffer at the hands of bad police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to say the gentleman's name. I know we've referred to him here in almost a third person. His name is Willie Henley, who is in the hospital right now. I thank all of you for your comments. Councilmember Scanlon, you mentioned political football. I agree. We can't just throw this ball and just hope it gets caught. This is where we have to work together. I appreciate Councilmember Wyatt's, all the comments, but, Councilmember Wyatt's comments, but we are the legislative body. So at the end of the day, if something is going to move, we have a responsibility to move it. We have a responsibility to write the policy. We have a responsibility to write the laws, like this one, that is a late file. And I want the public to understand what happens with a late file. Any council member could have objected to the late files that are before us, and this is one. And that would have delayed this conversation. You can't even have a conversation about a late file. This would have delayed it two more weeks. So no one objected to it. At the end of the day, when we talk about reform, like this reform that was authored and then supported by many, well, actually, yeah, by many, by signing on, and many who did not object. If we put the money before the mission, we will never get to the mission. If we always look at where's the money coming from, we'll never get to the point of, is this necessary? So I appreciate that, Councilmember, and that's why we wrote it in there, because even in our discussions, the first question that came up, how are we going to do this? But the how to fund it, I think, is less important than the if it's needed, because we find money around all of us. We can find money. We can, we really need something, really want something to be done, and I think if the argument or if the need is out there. Buffalo is known as city of good neighbors. I mean, I've been involved in so many efforts to raise money, whether it was raising, when they asked me to raise $4 million for City Mission. I was the honorary chairman. City Mission is up, the new building, and people said they'll never be able to do it. We got it done. So I appreciate all of you. The evaluations that has come up, this common council has been very clear on the things that we want to see in the contract. I, for one, without evaluations, it would have to be some other really attractive things there for police reforms. I think it's necessary. It has already been said, so I'm not going to echo it, but I'll just ride it. The fact that there's not many other jobs, and in every claims meeting, every claims meeting, and this is what I want people to understand, and not just people, for us to just remind ourselves, the question is always asked when we're paying out claims, especially when it's millions of dollars, what occurred afterward to the person who is now, that the city is now, to the employee, that the city is now spending out all of this money to do that? We found $4 million. We found $4 million. I don't think that this would be a $4 million deal for mental health professionals to happen. And I hope that we can work together. And I'm not just talking about with the administration. I'm talking about with the people who put us here. But I say this, that those people who put us here, and then those people who feel like reform needs to happen, this is where we work together. If this is important, you got to help push this mental health professionals 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The time is out, and people really don't care what the administration did, what the, what the council did. They want change. They're saying, listen, get in the room, figure it out. Don't leave us out there. And as you'll see in a resolution coming up in just a minute, or law, it was about the people. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to ask Corporation Counsel, and I, and I, and I mean this sincerely, I want to ask Corporation Counsel, is it possible for the community to be involved with negotiations for the Police Benevolance Association? Because if the community is paying the salary of the police officers, that the PBA is negotiating the contract with the city, and just like last year, when we got scrutinized, when the common council got our raises, everyone knew how much we were getting raised, everybody knew how much our salaries are. You have police officers who literally have folks' life in their hands. Is there a way that the community can be privy to those negotiations between the Police Benevolance Association and the city of Buffalo? So that they can be sure to be heard, so that they can see that we do want evaluations for officers, so that they can see that we do want mental health to be taken care of, and that we also want residency for our police officers? So is there a way, I just want to know, I'm, I'm not sure if you can answer that right now, but I want to know if it's even possible for the community to be privy to those negotiations?
Thank you. Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. I don't think I have sufficient information at hand to accurately respond to that question. So I'll do some more research or have some more conversations, and maybe it's something we can have a discussion about after the fact. Thank you.
Then, then I, I respect that response. So if, 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 just as, just as resourceful, this thing is, I'm sorry, just as resourceful as the community can be to uncover information, I'm hoping that the community then can help find a way to be a part of those discussions, so that the police union can see and hear, see the faces of the people who are being most adversely impacted by the decisions that they are making, and also hear the voices of the people whose lives have been changed and impacted by the decisions that they're making at those discussions as they're negotiating the contracts for the police officers who are here to serve and protect the people of the city of Buffalo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I will say that I don't know of a situation in which there is a contract negotiation that's handled by the public. It's usually agreed upon how those handle. However, the public and the community always has an input. And when I say that, if a community group, if an individual has an idea, has a desire, they can make their voices known in many, many ways. And to be very honest, I think some of them are being heard, because we're even having these discussions, not just based on what we've heard from the community, but what we have been talking, as the majority leader said about for years. So we'll find out that information and get it back to you. All right? Next item. Did we finish this one off? So we did, we have a, you have a, okay, we don't, we don't have a second, second by Councilmember Wingo. And I want to thank all of my colleagues. This is going, this is being basically approved today. And I think we, did we send the remainder? Because I want to send the remainder to committee. So what that means is, this council today, at this moment, just unanimously approved having a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, mental health professional embedded within the police. And now we move forward to having conversations with the administration. And again, for those out there who are saying reform, if this is what was asked, need your support. All right? Next item.
Item number 94, immediate purchase of non-lethal detaining mechanisms for Buffalo Police Department.
Is the late file items open?
This item is open, and Councilmember Wyatt started to talk about this a little bit. It was brought to my attention that in 2017, I filed the resolution in 2017. Calls on the Buffalo Police Department to provide the council with a white paper on non-lethal, lethal use of force in violent altercations. Directs that the affirmation, aforementioned white paper focus on use of tasers and how they may or may not be helpful as a standard issue to the police officer's arsenal. Three, request that this white paper be submitted to the council by the next meeting of the Oversight Committee. Not sure who was leading the force at that time. Council has been talking about tasers for no less than two years. Here's the receipts. Did we get the white paper? Nope. What did we get? We did get a change in leadership. Former change in leadership said no to tasers, no to tasers. Tasers kill people also. Well, tasers kill a lot less people than do bullets. We've been asking for this since 2017. I have in front of me the Taser, February 19th, 2020. Taser Conducted Energy Weapons. Signed by the Commissioner, approved by the Common Council. Buffalo Police Department hereby request permission from your honorable body to enter into a contract for Taser Conducted Energy Weapons with Axon Enterprise. Axon was chosen as they are the sole manufacturer of the goods and services required to satisfy the department's needs associated with this type of weapon. A copy of Axon's sole source letter is attached. A testing pilot project for this device was conducted in late 2019, utilizing officers from downtown V District Station House. As the testing project is now complete, the Buffalo Police Department now desires to initiate a contract with Axon that will encompass purchasing 620 Taser Conducted Energy Weapons for Buffalo Police Officers. The contract is for a five-year period dated February 19th, 2020, and covers the purchase of 620 Taser units, cartridges, battery packs, holsters, charging, docking, mounting station certification, and training. Funding for the initial phase of this project is contained within the Buffalo Police Budget Now, we did request for police to be here, and I want to say this, it was just made on yesterday. They had scheduled. I asked, and have we gotten any word when they're going to come? Okay, here's the problem. Here is Budget Line 12005005461006, Police Furniture and Equipment Dash Tasers. Amount $417,000. Now, before this seems like a battle, it's not a battle. This is about facts. The facts are, this common council has been asking, even before I did the resolution in 2017, when the Police Oversight Committee first came into being, which this council brought back to life. There were no protests then. There was nobody in the streets. There was nobody calling for reform at the level they are now. This council took leadership, put the committee together of diverse, a diverse citizenry. We asked for them, the current commissioner said yes, and we were thrilled. I have not had one conversation yet in which, what happened to the money? The reason I asked for it to be here today, because I don't want it to be, if we needed to use the money somewhere else, or if it was even COVID-related, say it. Say it to us. Say it to the public. Say it to Mr. Henley. Say it. But what gets us to this point is when we just don't know. But this body, this body, is the legislative body of this city. So I'm not blaming it on anybody else. I'm asking, we will formally now, not a, not a, not a text, not a phone call, a formal letter to go to the commissioner to ask him or his staff to appear before the committee on next Tuesday. Because something this important needs an explanation. Something this important that we have authorized. If desks were bought, say you had to buy some desks, whatever it was. But our, what we signed off on was 620 units. I'm being told right now, and this is from, this, this is the hard thing. You know where I'm getting my information? From the media. I had an interview with a, a news agency today who said, oh, well, when we called, we were told that three units are available in the city. Where? Where were the three units? Only what I'm told. I don't know this, folks. I was told they were with the SWAT team. Ah, so you got to call the SWAT team to get a taser. For anybody who argues against having embedded mental health, you ought to argue also about having tasers that are located with SWAT team. All this could have been avoided. It's open communication. At the end of the day, this council should not be finding out information on the news. But, but we, we have to be responsible for that. We're the elected lawmakers. I promise you this, I'm not ever going to put forth another resolution in which another department is supposed to carry it out without a report back to this council and a time and a date and exactly what we want reported. Because at the end of the day, that's our job. So I'm not pushing this, I, I don't believe in just talking about they, they, no, nope, nope, let's take some ownership here. We, if we know that the current climate, that certain information is not coming to us, we have to insist on it. And then if somebody doesn't show up, and again, he was called yesterday, so I don't, I'm, I got it. But if we don't get the information, this council has the ability, we are one of the only bodies that has subpoena power. And at a time when America is erupting over injustice, and rightfully so, this council has to do things a little different. And one of those things may, may have to be in, in situations of crisis, like what we experienced, and then finding out from the new, I'm, I'm literally sitting at my computer, refresh an article, and the article says, no tasers. Huh? Right away, that should have triggered a call. Right away. So what this calls for is the immediate purchase of those tasers. If you can't purchase it, you need to tell us why. And if you can't tell us why, we'll find out, but it shouldn't be this way. This is not what the public is asking for. They're asking us to be transparent. We got to be. Councilmember Revere.
Chairman, we appropriated the money.
Yes.
The contract was issued, money was put into an account. Can you just take money out of account? I'm going to ask Law Department.
Well, I can answer that for you. Where it was appropriated was in a line in which the word tasers was added, not by us, when the budget came to us. So that line says Police Furniture and Equipment Dash Tasers. Our understanding is, because we then approved the contract, that this was a part of this. And maybe it was, but we just need an explanation.
Well, if, if we have a contract and the money was in a line, why wasn't that contract executed? I'm just, I'm trying to understand, if we have a contract, money is put into an account in a line, why wasn't the contract executed?
And Councilmember Scanlon, you had an answer on that?
More of a follow-up question to back Councilmember Rivera's question up. Now, did the council approve a contract or the permission to enter into a contract?
She's just taking a look at it.
Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. Usually, the procedure is that we get a request from the department to enter into a contract, which looks like this. This is what I think Councilmember Pritchard just read out. And after that, we approve the ability to enter into the contract. We then expect from the department the actual contract, which we would then later on approve. I am not sure at this moment whether or not we did receive that follow-up contract, which was approved by the council, but that would be the next question, whether or not it came to us and did we approve it. This, what I'm looking at here, is a, a request for permission to enter into a contract, not the actual contract. Thank you.
That's a good, good clarification.
Yeah. So just to follow up your request to have the leadership of the department come in, the question would be then, why, after approving the permission to enter into, did nothing transpire after that?
Absolutely. For the transparency and to know, and that, because there could be, there's some explanation, I'm sure. We just need to know it. And now, not only do we need to know it, people need to know it. The family of Mr. Henley needs to know it. We need to know it. And officers on the street who are expecting to have tasers need to know it. Anything else?
I'd like to follow up on that.
I'm sorry. And then I'll come to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, no, that's okay. I just.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. That's the first point. The second point is, one is the contract, and the other one is the failure of the police department, its command staff, to communicate with us as a common council. If there was a change and they weren't going to purchase tasers, why didn't they let us know? And why do we have to find about, find out about incidents from the news like you did? I didn't get a call from anybody regarding the shooting that had occurred outside of Mr. Chief of Staff Ertha sending us a text. Absolutely no information. Now, I chaired the police oversight, and I got calls. And, you know, I, I felt completely, to the point where I says, look, I can't answer, I'm the chair of the police oversight, I can't answer any of those questions. And even if the police department said, Dave, we could only give you so much information because it's under investigation, or this is the only information you can release, then that would be the only information I would release. But I got absolutely no, no information from the Buffalo PD. And that is something that is reoccurring. We're finding out more things way after the fact. Not even the day after, the week after. Sometimes people call me up and they tell me things that have happened in my district, and I really don't know. Now, the chiefs, I give them a little bit of credit. Chiefs now call you up and say, hey, we had an incident, a shooting or something. But from the commissioner himself, it would behoove him to work with us, to communicate with us, to send somebody here today. I mean, you have a command staff, you have commissioners, you have deputy commissioners, you have chief, you have spokesperson. You could have had somebody here to talk to us today. And here we are talking about next week, long after this incident happened, long after, you know, we're all frustrated because we don't know what's going on, they're not communicating with. But this is a pattern that we're seeing, and I'd like to change that with the command staff in the Buffalo Police Department. And I am not looking, like you said, for a fight with anybody. Let's talk to each other. Let's work with each other. We're not against you. As a matter of fact, I think we work really well with, with the command staff and with even the unions and, and the officers themselves. But we need for the command staff and the commissioner change the way things are happening in terms of communicating with this common council and making his people accessible to this common council when we need them here. Right now, there are people watching and listening. They want the information now, they don't want it next week. The mayor was on, on a radio station yesterday explaining the incident, step by step what happened. That alleviates the concerns of the people. I mean, when I was watching the mayor, I said, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I mean, you know, he broke it down step by step, what had transpired that day. That should happen a lot sooner. That would go a long ways to alleviating the concerns of the residents or them reacting in a way that they perhaps shouldn't react. It's getting information in a timely manner is so important to you and to us.
Rats, I can't hear you.
And calm the fears and tensions and concerns of many of the people. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing people reacting to a lot of the things. But if we had the information, we'd probably be able to better deal. But if we had the information, we'd probably be able to better deal with the reaction part of it and put this information. I wish what the mayor did yesterday, he had done a few days before that. But getting back to the police commissioner, I think we need to have him come down, and we need to kind of say, hey, let's work together here. We're not against you. We're not here to beat you up or to let anybody beat you up when you come down to council chambers. We're here to work with you. So at this point, I'm not, I'm very frustrated with the Buffalo Police Department. I told the Buffalo News when they called me, yeah, I said, I'm frustrated that I don't know what's happened. I'm angry that I don't know anything about the TASERS after we had, I thought we had approved them. But now we know it's permission to enter into a contract and don't know where the money's at, don't know if the money's in account, don't know if the money's been spent. They have that information, we don't have it. So let's bring them in and find out if money is still in that account.
And the information that you got from the chief of staff was from me, and when the mayor would update me, I would send it out on that day. I just wanted to be clear. So as I got information, I passed it because my phone wiped out half of your numbers and half of the numbers in my phone, so I'm still trying to retrieve it. So I contacted him to send it, and as quickly as I got information, I sent it out to you all. Councilmember Golumbeck, and then Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support your request to have police or budget and/or budget people here, and I agree with Mr. Rivera as well. I think a lot of times is, you know, there's misinformation that just bandies about, and it's less than misinformation, it's a lack of information. And I think that having somebody here to explain things to us would be helpful. I vaguely remember having a conversation with someone in regards to the TASERS maybe a year ago, and I can't remember exactly who it was, I can't remember if it was in the police or budget office, but I think that what happened was that there were several companies that made TASERS and that they were bought out by one company, the prices increased. But as Mr. Rivera said, if we had somebody here, we would be able to get that answer without having to rely on a possible faulty memory or misinformation. So I, you know, go on the record as well, supporting to have people here to give us the direct information when we need it.
Absolutely. Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I just want to follow up with that. Should we send the remainder of this to finance and then have, request the commissioner of budget, since it is, we're talking about a direct budget line?
It is finance, so I don't mind if that's where colleagues want to send it. We can't send the remainder when we finish them. Thank you for that. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Council President, and I totally agree with you. You know, we've asked for just the information, and it just seems like it's such a battle for everything. I mean, goes to the finances, we have to get from the news what's going on with our finances, we have to get from the news what's going on with TASERS. It's just, it's respectful. You know, when we work with the administration on various issues, we go back and forth on things, we may not always agree, but we're supposed to be on the same team, and it just doesn't seem like it. I just wonder, in this environment, what's going on right now with our policing? And you not get a less lethal weapon, like a TASER, to have for your officers to protect themselves and protect our community? It just, to me, is just something that's derelict a responsibility. That do we not, are we not paying attention to what's going on in our world? You know, we have our officers out there in a situation what, you know, was unfortunate, but they could have had a TASER as opposed to a gun. And so again, I'm just wondering where we are as a city when we have our police department who, we put forth a request from two years ago, and I believe that request was even heightened because there was a situation where a police car rolled up on an individual who probably had mental illness. And so here we are saying, hey, let's get a TASER, let's not run up on somebody with a police vehicle. And here we are again with an individual who is now being charged because he hit a police officer with a bat, and we hear another story from her, from the granddaughter about this gentleman carrying a bat regularly. And all of a sudden, this incident occurred, which it may have been better to taste some, but I'm really hopeful that the command staff, the police department will come. What more important, when the common council asks for you to be present, is more important than us, unless you go to the state? You know, so again, I question what we hear and what's given to us most often, which is always second, third hand, and we giving people excuses, but if that man would have been killed yesterday, we'd have had rioting in our streets. And this common council has taken the appropriate measures so that we shouldn't have had a rioting. It should have been gentleman being tased because of his illness, not being shot because they didn't have another weapon for, another way to deescalate. So again, you know, this is something, again, I was frustrated yesterday during our caucus because we, sometimes I don't think we understand where we are. We're on a tempest. This is so volatile. We should be in constant communication, letting us know what's going on because, hey, the wrong thing happened, we could have anarchy in our city again, like what happened in Rochester. And I'm paying attention, I'm very sensitive to it, and I think our police department needs to be just as sensitive. We're at a crossroads, and one thing can happen and it can turn us all the way back to where we were some months ago. We don't want to go back there, so I'm hopeful that they'll come before us next week and have a good explanation and hopefully have on order those TASERS that we should have had months ago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Did we have a second already on that?
The motion was to adopt the resolved remainder to finance?
Second by Councilmember Noakowski. Thank you, councilmembers, for your support. Next item.
Item 95, Local Law Intro Number One, Carrion's Law, The Duty to Intervene.
Motion to send to legislation?
Motion to send to legislation, second by Councilmember Wyatt. This law that is before us, which I have so many papers, will be one of the first. Now, I think Corporation Council, when they did the research, you weren't able to find another municipality with a law, I was told, a duty to intervene law? I'm sorry. Well, council staff. So there's not many municipalities that have a duty to intervene law. Buffalo would be really in a different, will be in a different realm when this is passed, if it's passed. This is the Carrion's Law. It is mentioned directly at the top in Section Number Two. And for those who ask why it may not be at the top, Corporation Council will answer that. But Section Number Two says, "This local law shall be known as Carrion's Law, semicolon, The Duty to Intervene." I want to thank, first of all, this council. I want to thank our Assistant Corporation Council that is no less than brilliant and a hard worker who burned the midnight oil, Karen Gordon, and of course, all of her supervisors and the Corporation Council for this city, Tim Ball. This was a heavy lift in that, not only did you have to look at city laws, but state laws, federal laws, and the Constitution of the United States. And we asked for this in a rather quick manner, again, because this was so important. But what is not seen in this that I was able to see in draft form is that many of the proposals, the organized community brought to us that they had studied are in this law. Those who sent us suggestions, and now that it's going to committee, which it must go to committee, all laws have to go to committee, and they must age for two weeks. That's law, that's charter. It will age for two weeks, but what you see does not mean it has to stay exactly like this. That's the reason it ages. There may be people who read this, who may contact us and say, you know, you left this out, or we want this. It doesn't mean that'll happen because everything cannot just be stuck into a law because it may break another law or another rule or be going against the Constitution of the United States. But what I have never seen in my almost 10 years of the council is a law that has taken this much input from community. I shouldn't say never, because I think when Councilmember Golumbeck worked along with the food trucks, it was a lot of input, a lot of input, and a lot of that went in, and then other things. But this, being police reform, this is one of the most comprehensive documents that our Corporation Council has worked on and not only heard the council, but has heard the community and did not just redline out what the community, the organized community that did their homework and said, these are parts that are important. And so this will go after, did I give it a second? Yeah, we gave it a first and second. This will go to committee for next week's discussion to the legislation committee. People can write in, this is not over. You can go online, you can read this law, but understand, it is not my intention to drag this out for two months. We have been talking about it, the door has been opened. It is my intention that when, after we discuss it in committee and it has aged for two weeks, that it is back before this council for a vote to make this local law, which is now named Carrion's Law, The Duty to Intervene, to bring it into law. Mr. Chairman, who was the second?
I'm about to say, you didn't second it, but I'll be happy to be the second on that.
Okay. I thought, did we have a second? Councilmember Wingo will second that. Any other discussion? Councilmembers, thank you for your support for Carrion's Law, which is making history in the city of Buffalo. Next item. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, you know, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about if it should have had Carrion's name on it, but when I think about all the different laws that have affected individuals, even little children in such situations, this appropriately has her name. And so I commend her for her diligence. I know that she still has an upward climb in getting her pension monies, but I think this sends a message that we are really about police reform and making certain that officers who do their duty and do it in the light of a situation where another officer is not being responsible or doing what they have been sworn to do, that an officer will not be punished like she was. So I really commend this council for doing, taking that stand and protecting other officers who do their job and do it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All righty. Thank you. We look forward to the discussion in the committee if there is any. Next item.
Item Number 96, Review of Worker Training Program Laws for Compliance Enforcement.
Motion to adopt the resolved remainder to legislation?
Second by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Item Number 97, Appoint Marriage Officer.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item Number 98, Amend Zoning Map for Three Beacon, 180, Romania, and Eight Bell.
Motion to send legislation, City Planning Board, Item 98 and 99.
Second by President Protim Scanlon.
Item Number 100, Lack Talus Ordinance to Beautify Portion of South Market Avenue.
Item is open, is a late file?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item Number 101, Trailblazing Sign for Janetta Romelko.
Motion to send the CD.
Second by Councilmember Wingo. Any other items before us, anything that needs to be revisited? Hearing none. Announcement.
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Regular committees, Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, September 22, 2020, at 9:45 a.m. Committee on Finance, following Civil Service, Tuesday, September 22, 2020, at 10 a.m. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, September 22, 2020, at 1 p.m. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, September 22, 2020, at 2 p.m. Special Committees, Committee on Claims, Wednesday, September 23, 2020, at 10 a.m.
Councilmembers, any announcements? Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are happy today because we have been having successful stakeholder meeting drive-throughs in Maston District at the Delavan-Greider Center, 877 East Delavan, in the city of Buffalo. 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock, every second Saturday of every month. You don't have to drive through, you can walk through. So I want everyone to know, you can walk through the drive-through, Maston Stakeholders Meeting at Delavan-Greider Center in the Maston District, 877 East Delavan. Now, we're also happy to announce that we have this huge, this wonderful and amazingly fun event coming up for all of our seniors in the city of Buffalo, Bingo with Wingo. Don't ask me. I did not name it. They named it after me, so I did not choose the name. But anyway, it is Bingo with Wingo, and it will be Friday, October the 2nd. That will be from noon to 3 o'clock p.m. This is what we're going to do. You're going to come in your cars, stay in your car. You're going to be given a placard or a bingo board to play on. You're going to be able to win prizes. There will be giveaways. There will be information. There will be free food for you. The broadcast will be live on 96.5, Power 96.5, from 12 p.m. to 3 p.m. So there will be no need for any PA system because everyone will be in their cars comfortably, safely, distanced from everyone else. And listening to this broadcast, we will have workers at three church parking lot locations. The first church, Elam Church, on the corner of Holden and Chalmers. And then, of course, Antioch Baptist Church on the corner of Fillmore and Urban, and of course, Trubethal at Delavan, not Delavan, but Ferry and Greider. Everyone knows where these parking lots are. We want to fill up these lots with seniors in their cars. If you know that you have been tested and you do not have COVID or any symptoms and you want to ride with someone, show up and ride with them, but we are looking to have a whole lot of fun. This is also being brought to you in partnership with United Healthcare and 96.5. So please, everyone, register at the Maston District Office phone number, which is 851-5145. You must remain in your vehicles the entire time unless you have to use the restrooms, and if you use the restrooms, you have to use your face mask, and we will have sanitizer at every door of these parking lots so that when you, at these churches, so that when you have to use the restroom, you can use the restroom. But again, we're airing live on October the 2nd from 12 noon to 3 p.m. Call, get the information, 851-5145. We're looking to have a whole lot of fun. We're going to play Bingo with Wingo. You all come on and have fun with this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My grandmother was still alive, she would be thrilled about it. Any other announcements? All righty. Council, Majority Leader, motion? Majority Leader? He's trying to register. Motion to adjourn, second by Councilmember Golumbeck. Thank you for historic day, councilmembers.